I would like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for February 21st, 2023. And the first order of business is the pledge allegiance of these. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the Director of Land, Land Recreation and Inspection Services Housing Choice Designation Submission Authorization.
Hi.
Hi, welcome. Good.
So I had made a request to Joe to the board regarding housing choice grant program. Well, I should say housing choice designation status. This is offered to communities that have accomplished one of two things. That communities that have increased their housing production 5% or more than the past five years. Or communities that have increased their housing production 3% and then there's other boxes at the chat association that.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Mike Hanson Ellis, Director of Land, Inspectorial Services, out of Land for short.
Yep.
So the Optin is fortunate to have exceeded the 5% threshold. Currently, we have eight, well, just over 8% increase in housing production. So that lands us square within being eligible for designation. What this designation does is allows the town more funding opportunities through the housing choice grant programs. So this is just kind of the first step to get our foot in the door. But I'm not, I'm not sure of any grants to that program that are, if we would still be able to apply with this round. Because this round we're applying for just the designation, but we should be eligible next year this time. Be having received the designation and then being eligible for their grants. So I'll intend on pursuing that when the opportunities come available through this program. So I was asking the board to basically endorse the application. I would need the chairman to, what it says, the application is have the chairman type in their initials. I would offer to do that on your behalf. You don't have to.
Your ear, but yeah.
Type in your initials. You had a copy of the application through your review tonight, so you can take a look. That is, you know, it was pretty nice stuff. It's basically just a lot of time and just doing the calculations for the house production that's happened to the town. That's kind of it. Do you have some questions about it here?
How long does the designation stand for? I know it's sort of a five-year look back measurement. So how often do they sort of have to renew it or how's that work?
It is a five-year look back. I mean, we have to reaffirm it every year that we are interested. So we get, you initially get designated.
Yeah.
And I forget if that designation lasts for a certain amount of time, but I do know two years. Okay.
It's two years. Okay. And then you sort of have to reapply at that point. Got it. Got it. And the only reason I ask is because if it was just a yearly thing, then obviously getting our applications in almost at the same time as we're getting the designation would. I guess they would never do that. But yeah, that was why I asked. So awesome.
And I think it's easier once you are designated to just kind of reaffirm that in the same
Yeah.
round as when new grants are coming available.
I see. I gotcha. Yeah. Right. That's an easier process. So you can still apply and get the designation.
But you would have already had it. That's a point.
Awesome. Question.
Just a quick question. You said 8% is the increase. So that's over, what does that number look like? So that's over how many years, how many units? What was our base number and what did we actually pick up? So how do we end up the petty?
That is. Since 2018 and that's a scope is 2018 to 2022. January to December, starting January and then December. We have, so that's based off of, they use the 2010 census numbers for that. Because the 2020 census numbers have not been issued for this particular information. So for this program, the 2010 numbers is a year-round housing count of 2,832 homes or dwelling units. And the number, so from January 2018 through December of 2022, the number of new units that we have issued is 237. And so that equals 8.37% increase, as you saw.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good number.
Good.
Yes.
That is 140. Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, that includes all housing units. And it also includes accessory dwelling units, apartments, you know, accessory apartments.
Great. Any other questions?
Uh, no, I have nothing else.
Great. Is there a motion on the floor?
I can do that.
Thank you.
I moved that the board vote to authorize the submission of the application for the housing choice designation.
I would second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes by unanimous action. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate the time. It's awesome. Good stuff.
Appreciate the need to hear.
See you later. Slade, and next on the agenda, Town Manager Report.
Upset. Okay, so I wanted to give the board an update on another, number of projects that currently are being worked on by various departments within the town. You know, sort of talking first about Town Hall. Previously mentioned this last meeting, but have a little bit more of an update. Vadar, which is our financial software, we're nailing down the conversion date. So we're going to basically put a freeze on financial purchasing processes between March 23rd and 26th. This will allow for us over basically that weekend to roll things from the existing sort of antiquated or really it ends up being vintage software product into cloud version of the product. So that's, we've finally committed to a date to get that done. Town sewer information, you know, we have put a hold on activities in Town Hall as we got our hands on exactly what was causing the sewer backups. And currently we're, no, it's causing it, but what the solution is was totally different issue. And, and so basically we do have a solution that's being reviewed by the town engineer. It is a mixture of changing out the bathroom fixtures as well as cleaning out and potentially relining the pipes to reduce friction within the pipes. The thought is that if we can increase the rate of the flow. They're all low volume, low points. But think of it as that that volume of water, the 1.6 gallons is being released over a longer period of time. Therefore, there's not as much pressure to move things through the system. We're evaluating a tank fixture that then will just have that concentrated initial flush to move things through the system. Also because of the, the pipes, they're thinking about either lining it or almost like cleaning it to get rid of some of the friction within the pipes. That as well as removing handout, moving to either dryers. You know, or a different type of product is really going to be the end solution. This, these are all things that the engineer is evaluating. The idea is that by the end of next week, we'll have a concrete solution to then price out and come back at the March 7th meeting. This is an expense that we don't really have budgeted within the finance budget. So I may need to be some sort of consideration to even meeting with the FinCom if we want to consider a reserve transfer sets. The issues have been unforeseen and unexpected, but right now we're looking at about the 15,000 to 17,000 mark. So could be a lot worse, but we'll have a firm recommendation from the engineers assisting Dennis on that. Town Hall parking lot, that's a restripping project that has been currently put on hold while the EDC and the consultant who's doing the parklet design sort of in the wooded area right next to the parking lot, waiting for that plan to sort of solidify a little bit more. So we can know where access in and out is so that we can make sure that when we restrike, we can accommodate that. But either way, would expect some sort of stripping to happen June, July. Because by then we should know, have a better idea of what is going to be happening down there.
Better question on that. I, my recollection is that it was restriping, but also some construction. Is that construction to add spaces and?
The construction was to deal with, I think, the ramp area. That, that's still, that whole project is still sort of like on Dennis's radar. It does include, so it is, yes, you are correct. It's not only the restripping.
Okay, so that's part of what you're, to that sort of reconfiguration, restriping and a little bit of.
Exactly.
Yeah, because I think were they going to add some pavement to up at the top or is it really just making the parking here?
This is really just making it hard to pull in.
Pull in. Okay.
I thought I recalled them talking about curb cut. I think part of the handicapped accessibility issue. Yeah, I was trying to make sure that van or.
Strike yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, we have a firm date for installing the Restine Building handicap ramp. We're meeting with the vendor on Thursday to go over last minute installation logistics with code department as well as DPW. We will be shutting down the parking lot for a portion of the library. I got confirmation, I said, the week of March 6th. It is specifically, we're looking at March 9th for the installation date. So that will take a couple of days for them to do. So we'll get more information once we have that meeting on Thursday. Matthew has been involved in communications and will get the word out to the library and papers in case we need to identify additional parking locations. Town manager's office has been busy working on a number of procurement documents. Just finished contract and procurement documents for Pratt Pond, this water quality. Actually, that should be Mill Pond. I'll correct that before posting it. Also working on contracts and procurement for cleaning services, ADA improvements, HVAC. Working with REC on Canadian geese control and also working with the fire chief and police chief on procurement associated with fire station HVACs, which repair, which was required because of the cold spell. We did have their heat go out and there's some plumbing and HVAC repairs associated with that. But also working with them on the HVAC control project, which is being funded through an earmark that the town received back in May 2022. Website redesign work continues. Town Hall server, this was an article that appropriated $60,000 for replacement of the town server. IT as well as the technology committee is working with retrofit to evaluate a virtual server rather than physical server. That's where actually the Vadar cloud migration assists because that is the only legacy software that really needs to live on our physical servers. Everything else, if we move to virtual, it ends up being not an issue. You don't need to maintain any sort of physical server here. So we're evaluating the, not only the upfront costs associated with getting that up, but also long term to make sure that the virtual compared to a in-house server is going to be the right option. Tied to that was also a fiber network. We had received over $225,000 in fiber grants. However, the delay in being able to acquire fiber optic cable has been about a nine-month lead time. So we basically, we're still waiting. They're hoping that come the summer, we'll be able to get that. So we can start that project.
Just a quick question, going back to RecCom. I know a couple of years ago, Rich Gazorian had talked about bringing in new sand and getting rid of sort of the rocky, stony sort of sand that's there. And I didn't know if that was anything that Maria ever talked about, or I don't know if Rich ever even mentioned it to her. Have you ever heard anything about that?
I've not heard anything about that.
Okay.
Any bar with, as far as, I would, I would have to assume the recreation commission has some form of beach maintenance longer term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. Yep. And then what are they doing for the geese control? Because I know we ended up going to town meeting at one point for that.
Um, so the sort of annual operating budget under the town manager's budget includes $7,000 for geese control. So they're going to be tapping, tapping that funding. Comes in around $5,000. So we're, we're fine. It ends up being what's called aviling. So you know, basically you're just not going to have any geese or anything. Yeah. So.
Good. Thank you.
Grove Street Bridge, they've completed their field work, finishing up their base map, completed soul borings. And geotechnical report is being prepared. They're looking at completing the 25% design plans so that we can review them at the end of March. Tyne Bond is finalizing contract for the water tank rehabilitation project. Design work will start within a couple of weeks. Fiscav, which is a multi-year project, includes removal and replacement of existing AC pipe full depth reconstruction, including new drainage, granite curb and concrete sidewalks. AC is in the design stage with Wright Pierce, our sort of water and sewer contractor. And road construction is being designed by the Beta Group. So those are things that both over the next couple of months, especially with AC pipe, we're going to have Dennis back in to talk about securing that material since the lead time for some of this pipe is, is up at around six months.
Is that for the full length of Fiscav, both sides of 140?
It's between 140 and Hartford North.
Hartford, okay. Okay, so not that little stretch between whatever it is. There's one.
Pleasant. Yeah, it's just for.
Okay. School side. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You didn't get the sidewalks extended, even.
That's a very short side. That's what I was thinking, because there's a bunch of people and kids that live along that road there.
Right.
Like Pleasant.
Yes.
Could use that.
I know that Dennis has talked with me about what the timeline is for Pleasant, because that's really rough, including that's a lot of pedestrian traffic as well. So.
And is that, that's a town project?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Yeah, if he thinks of it, or if you can ask him, just look at that sort of other section of Fisc and just see, I have, he's the expert. So I totally defer instruction because I know that there's a road and I think there's already a sidewalk there, but.
And I think there's money that we had set aside for that construction project on Fisc. That was kind of.
Okay, right, like earmark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was earmarked right for.
Got it.
Last year's budget, that was part of the construction.
Right.
It just didn't make the, I guess, the last summer's construction.
Construction, a year. Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
Dennis had previously been in front of the board as well as official representative with Crafton Upton Railroad on that coordinated sewer project. Wright Pierce, again, the town's engineering consultant, is completing the engineering. Earthworks, which is the contractor for Crafton Upton Railroad, is securing some of the material, materials that are needed for that project. And that the project is on track to begin construction in the spring. Tip project, code department had let Mastod as well as the project contractor know of a number of ADA requirements. And that Mastod has been communicating with DPW to make sure that they can address it when they remodulate sometime in April.
I did notice they paved that little access section.
Really only.
It's temporary, I know. It's right, but it was, they at least put something there because it's better than what was there. I know there's still a telephone pole in the way, but at least people can still walk through there more safely than they could when it was.
Exactly.
Little things sometimes.
Buy us a little time, right?
Buy us some time.
The 140, which we had that design public hearing for the improvements to state is proposing. They reached out to us to schedule a meeting to go over town comments. Actually, since publishing, pulling together this, we're going to be meeting on March 1st to go over our comments and talk about some of the important things that the board also felt need to be part of this project. For emergency management, for the March 7th meeting, the updated conference emergency management plan is going to be brought before the board for signing and final acceptance. This is a plan that's been reviewed by a number of departments as well, signed off by the school superintendents. And so the Chief Bradley will be in to talk about that. And then also want to talk about some other things associated with recent events and maybe people's concerns about the Crafton Upton Railroad. Fire HVAC, my earlier mention, to finalize procuring documents to get the work commenced. Last couple of things under planning economic development. We're planning for a public forum on March 16th here in Town Hall for the housing production plan. We're going to coordinate with church to make sure that parking is available as far as overflow. Since this as well as across the street will likely be full. And that Michael, Town Planner, is working with CMRPC to make sure that we get public notice and PR out there to invite people to come. For the parklet next to Town Hall, there was a meeting with representatives from the church about a potential easement that the church may be willing to provide the town to allow for development and maintenance of the parklet. That's going to be something that is going to be ongoing. And BSC Group, which is the consultant that's working on it, is going to be visiting the site a little bit more to revise some of the designs. And then that'll be something EDC will continue to work on. But then anything would require really coming back in front of the board's alignment as well as the church. If there is any sort of desire to enter into an easement agreement, if we want to fully that and what our exposure would be, what some of the liability costs would be. And also if there's any conditions that the church was for that. One of the main things is this would allow for some additional connections within the town center. Especially, you know, to support the local rapid response plan that talk about making the town center, Upton Center is more of a walkable area. And with a lot of parking that's also on that side that come to town events, just adds a way that's out off the road for, for people and to create another sense of place downtown.
Aside, like if you can put a little crossing bridge there and a crossing bridge across Center Brook, it sort of just helps connect and sort of bring out a ring of connection. Just good.
Yeah, keep some of the foot traffic off the roadways, which really is an added benefit.
Last thing, the facade program is finally live. Email blast went out last week. Social media postings also occurred. Michael is coordinating with CMRPC to discuss next steps. And I'm going to be going door to door to visit businesses to spread awareness. Michael's already spoken with one business owner who's interested in participating in the program. Last thing that's not on here is that coming up on March 4th is another COVID clinic. It's posted online. If people need a booster or still need additional shots, recommend people visit town website for more details.
Questions?
Just one quick question. If you could just talk for a minute, I'll be switching over to Vadar, switching to the cloud-based server. I think we bought a Town Hall server just recently, right? Probably two magic cycles ago.
We authorized a, back in 2022, replacement of a server. My understanding is that, and Sandy can probably correct me, we actually had with our existing server, didn't it die a couple, two years ago? And they lost good amount of information emails. That is what also prompted the switch to Office 365 because of the exchange server going down. So there could have been a repair. My understanding is that a couple of years ago, three years ago, the police server was replaced. I don't know if that may be it, but physically up at the police station.
Okay, just curious how that's going to affect budgetarily. I mean, having a cloud-based server is that something of membership that will pay annually to a third party? Or will that be picked up through our IT department or?
So that's one of the things that we are evaluating. So, you know, the higher upfront costs associated with physical server versus more annualizing that, that cost. There are licenses that under either scenario, we need to pay upfront and they're valid for three years so that the article would, would pay for it. That is one of the reasons why we're evaluating both solutions identified, not only in the short run, what the you know, option is for the town, but then also going forward, once we go past, once we use the $60,000, that's the article. What then is our potential for ongoing costs? Because essentially then it becomes a fixed operating cost that you're building into IP budget versus a capital cost that you're coming in every six to eight years to replace.
Is part of what you're asking whether or not we bought the server that we approved at town meeting?
Part of it.
Okay.
And then just trying to figure.
Did buy that server, that's the $60,000 you're talking to. But yeah, I know there are other parts of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We can get into it, you know, a little bit more later on when we really take the budget apart, try to figure out how it's going to plug in. I was just curious if we knew off, you know, to, if this was going to cost 20,000 bucks a year or 10,000, if I, whatever that number might look like.
Yeah.
Just so that we kind of figured out where it was going to fit within the budget.
And one of the, one of the reasons to also, and then this is where the Menden Upton, recent school district's IT director, he's involved on this to provide some of that sort of forward-thinking analysis to it is that the fiber network, once we get that connected, right now, I mean, we can then expand as, as need grows versus you're talking about a server that's up at, up at police, then another one at fire, one at Town Hall. You go to more virtual servers, you're just adding on and you're not looking at physical servers that then need to be maintained at those maintenance agreements. So for the technology committee, we are doing that, that analysis so that we can sort of come forward with what makes sense. If it does make sense to buy it, okay, great. But every three years, we have to renew those licenses. So that's also an ongoing cost that we need to annualize.
Good. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Great. Next on the agenda, we have any public comments on anything? We'll open it up to folks in the audience. Okay, seeing none. We will go on to the Board of Selectmen discussion items, reopening the annual town meeting warrant for the insertion of additional articles.
So for the board, before going into that, just wanted to let you know of a revision, not only at your desk, but also on the, on the town's website. Did revise the packet to include memorandum that was dated today with language for the amendments. And also there was a fourth article, one that was submitted by historical commission, but it got listed. It got inadvertently dropped off the, the warrant. So that language is in here, but actually looking at just three of the articles to be added as new articles onto them. Do you want me to go into each one of them?
I would ask my fellow board members how they want to handle this.
Probably. Yeah. When you mentioned four, I see three in the packet. So I was going to look at the website and see what that fourth article.
It is, but yes, you could. But it is, it is in, so if you flip the page in it, there's another one on there.
Okay.
Not on this.
So my apologies. I thought I, I printed that off. So I can, I can go through and if you'd like, I can just basically put it up on the screen as well.
Sure. Yeah, I've, I've got it. It was in the packet that's online.
It's just not on your paper.
No, 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 no. It's on page 19 of the. No, 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 no. It's on page 19 of the. Yeah, if you go to page 19, you should see four.
But now you said you only want to add three.
Because the fourth should have been included right off of that.
A, down one. There's four there. That's what he's referring to.
So the first article is one prior year bill where where it was discovered that a FY 22 invoice that was one of the cable departments invoices was not paid. So looking for approval to pay that $1,200 invoice out of the town's egg access cable account. So that's the first one. The second is prior year wages. For some elected official wages, they were not processed before the end of the fiscal year. Under the the town's procedures, prior to the election, these are processed and unfortunately, with all the the comings and goings of people coming in May last year, those for some awards did not get processed. So this was like the the trust fund commissioners, a couple. Correct, school. The housing authority, some of the recreation commissions. So those, I'm sorry, what?
Moderator.
Town moderator. So we can't pay them out of the current fiscal year. So I, while I did prepare a draft warrant, language, I would work with town council to identify if this, as well as prior years, just gets to be merged together. But it is, it is fairly straightforward. We did from, from the initial amount that I had identified in the packet. We'll be upping that instead of the 67, $50 value, we use straight 7,000 because the difference between what chairs get and regular members, that's the difference. We just had internal staff meeting to review final numbers this afternoon. So that's, that's the second article. Third, emergency management consulting services. This is something that associated with the Grafton Upton Railroad, there's a lot of non procedures, but also expansion plans that they're undergoing. And in talking with Chief Bradley, one of the things we'd like to do is to identify, okay, let's, let's just get a larger appropriation. In this case, it would be 25,000. Rather than right now is the first year that he is proposing 10,000 for this within the operational budget. Like to sort of pull that out because we don't know upfront on if 10 is going to be enough and we want to be able to make sure that we have that work. But second, by the time we get to town meeting, I would expect to have some sort of progress on negotiating basically the payment of peer review fees by the Grafton Upton Railroad so that we can just pass over this. Grafton Upton does not pay any building permits. They don't submit any special permit peer review fees to the planning board. So basically to work with the town, the town has been essentially doing the peer review on our own dime. So I've reached out to them to start that conversation. Let's have an agreement, you know, identify peer review fund that they could then deposit money into. It allows for us to not only retain the consultants we need to respond in a timely manner, but it doesn't hold up their project as they're trying to get approvals for some of their expansions. So that's an ongoing conversation that hope to be able to have as we get closer to town meeting. The last one is that article that the historical commission had submitted prior to the closing of the warrant. They're looking for 120,000 from the CTC historic reservation account for restoration of the exterior of the Grange Hall. The Grange Hall is looking at applying for a 50 50 matching grant. But if they don't, if they're not successful in getting the grant, historical commission still wants to proceed with that, that project.
Questions?
Well, getting over to, we'll, we'll go back to number three. Between say Hope Dale, Grafton, obviously there's the rail operates in numerous towns. We'll take Grafton for instance, because they have a pretty large operation over there. Does Grafton or has Grafton utilized a service like this to give us kind of a rough idea of what do they expect to get? And what do we expect to spend? I know the 25,000 is kind of a placeholder, more or less. Ultimately, we're going to pass the fees on if we can to the but do we know if something like this has been done in the past?
I can, I can follow, I can follow up with both communities just to find out how they, that fund retaining professional services to do peer review of that.
I think you might be asking about the unended product as well as cost.
We can, yeah, that's kind of.
Do you mean the, the value, what, once the project is completed, the assessed value or?
What type of information specifically would we expect to kind of ascertain from this? This particular article, this particular expense.
That may be something that when we come back on the seventh and we talk about an emergency, the emergency management plan. I did talk with Chief Bradley about giving an overview as far as the work that we do do with Grafton Upton Railroad with their expansion plans. And that may be a perfect opportunity to identify like, you know, what, what would this, this actually help?
What is, what does the review entail?
Exactly.
Worth $25,000.
Yeah.
Obviously we want to minimize no expense associated with providing safe environment for the people in the community to the greatest extent we can. So that's not the issue. The issue is let's make sure we're getting for that.
Yeah, essentially this would be just like, you know, for planning boards that have special permit applications for subdivisions or larger development projects. Mass general law allows for towns to require that they deposit fund to hire an engineer on behalf of the town to undergo that engineering analysis. There is not a mechanism here for the railroad. There, and even if, if they needed to apply for building permits, that would then be a mechanism to allow for a collection of some sort of professional review fee.
Just gives us kind of the mechanism to get that.
Exactly.
Do the expansion plans include updated sort of safety and risk mitigation?
Fire suppression.
Policies.
To see here. Exactly.
Like if needed chemicals to, you know, deal with any sorts of accidents and things like that. So that's part of the expansion plan. It's not just, hey, engineering, where are we putting the rails? It's everything included. Hey, you're going to have more cars, you're going to have more switches. Do we need additional fire equipment? Do we need another escape, you know, another access egress, all that, which I know.
Exactly. So based on the material that is on the site, looking at fire suppression, fire. You know, basically the logistics of how you would deal with. If there is an emergency, how would you respond? What systems are there in place to make sure if there is a spill that it's being doused and doesn't create another problem as fire sparks could ignite all things. So.
And, and there's very. And I was just saying, we did, we did get that email that I think you all saw, right? So obviously with what's gone on in Ohio with that train derailment, I mean, that's obviously an absolute worst case scenario disaster. It obviously makes all of us that live in Upton and anywhere near any of these rail yards consider what the impact would be if we ever had a similar type scenario, whether we could or couldn't, or I don't know, but certainly there's a lot of chemicals over there stored in a lot of tanker cars. None of them are, are great from what we understand. So understanding what the the safety protocols are, what the plans are, and I, I know, you know, Chief Bradley, Chief Marshand have a lot of folks on their teams and they themselves are experts in a lot of this stuff. So we fully trust them, but want to be very mindful of that.
Right. And I suppose also, you know, as you look at this, it also makes you think, and you know, there's an expansion. So is it more of the same? Are we talking about the same chemicals, just more of them, more storage? Do you store more tanks, whatever the situation may be? Or is this a situation where it's right now, we get, we're handling, you know, four dangerous chemicals? Are we stepping that up to six? You know, that's something that and you know, as we talk about this and discuss it, it just triggers those other, you know, ideas.
Yeah.
You know, as again, everybody is familiar with what's going on in Ohio. Burn portion of that is especially, you know, scary to say the least.
Okay. Other questions?
Do we know when this expansion is going to be complete?
All I know is that they're, they're sort of in like a second phase of expansion. A third phase then is contingent on final CEO and approvals of the second phase. So I mean, it's a multi-year effort. And you know, as they, as they go through, and you're entirely right, Steve, that some of this is material based. That different classifications, you know, are, are then come in line with the third phase of expansion, which that really necessitates that professional review to make sure that fire suppression systems are placed, alarm systems are placed adequately, not only protect if there is a case of emergency, but notify the town.
And I think that there are, I know that our public safety officials have clarity of what is there, that they can deal with any kind of scenario and have the right plans in place. I also know that the railroad sort of by definition as a business, right, has always said like, this is what we're handling now. We don't know what the market's going to do, how the market's going to change. So they may, that may evolve or change, or they may do more of one thing or less of another thing, or stop doing one thing and add something else. But any of those changes have to be communicated with our local safety officials. And I, and I know that that's where, you know, any, any issues or opportunities or safety measures will be taken care of. So.
And I know we did have the ability to see the chemicals real time. Do you remember the?
Yeah.
One of the members over there was able to procure a grant to get some software and a laptop that was able to read real time what was coming in. But again, you wonder how accurate that is.
Yeah.
A year later, two years later, so on and so forth.
Good. All right. If there aren't any other questions, then.
I did have a question about this for. All right. We, we kind of beat up number three pretty good, or at least covered, covered it to a great extent. Article number four with the Grange. Who's the owner of the Grange right now?
I know them as the Grange. We do have the chair of the historical commission online. He's been working with the Grange and it looks like he's even prepared to answer that.
All right.
Mr. Phillips, welcome.
Ed Phillips, historical commission. The town of Upton Selectmen in 1926 granted the building and property to the Grange. So the Grange in Upton, an agricultural organization owns the building and the property.
Okay. That answers that. So 1926 and it is the Grange. So I imagine it's a 501 C3 charity, isn't it?
It's a 501 C8 charity.
Okay.
Which just designates their, an organization or something. It's the only difference from a C3 and a C8. Basically the same legal standing. And their only source of revenues and incomes are annual fares and stuff they hold. They raise two or $3,000 a year and I don't suspect they've done any significant repairs or restorations to that building since it was given to them in 1926. Even though it's in terrific shape, but it needs an exterior makeover and that's the intent of the historical commission, that even if the Grange doesn't survive in the future, we have that building, which is Upton's oldest standing schoolhouse, still in town to look at. So.
Very good. That's all I have.
Okay. Good.
Good game.
Man, great. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. I got it. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, to reopen the warrant for the Monday, Monday, May 4th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting. All right. Let me start off again. I would move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, to reopen the warrant for the Thursday, May 4th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting to insert the articles one through three on the annual town, make that one through four.
It is three because, sorry, the historical commission was submitted at time. I just didn't have it off the track.
Okay.
So it's already, it's already.
Articles one through three on the annual town meeting warrant, as may be amended by town council and to immediately close said warrant.
Second.
All those in favor? I wish there is by unanimous action. Next on the agenda is the warrant review. We just talked about the new ones. Any new updates, revisions since our last discussion?
No, as, as we go through these, one of the things that I, I was wondering if the, the board may consider is that the articles that are primarily submitted from department heads that relate to their capital, there will be a capital budget committee meeting next Monday, the 27th, where then the department heads will be going in front of them to review their capital class to get a recommendation from the CTC. My, my thought would be then on March 7th, we could then bring those departments together once we have a recommendation from the CTC on those, or at least have gone through that thought process on those articles to then have the department heads talk specifically about those. So we just sort of skipped over those part of this, but it's all up to you. If you want to discuss prior to that, that's fine. But at least that was my thought dealing with those that out of the 34 articles we have. That would take a few off of the list to talk about.
Yeah. You okay?
You want to discuss, you want to just hold off, then we won't discuss any of the capital requests until we get a better feeling from the department heads as of today.
Yeah, I, I think as long as you're okay with that, I think it's okay, just because if some of them end up getting pulled off, then we're not sitting just talking about something that the capital budget committee is not going to support anyway. And the department heads are going to say, hey, you know what, let's switch it up, let's do this. They're like, I haven't looked at the capital budget plan and fork. They have all that. So presumably they'll look at it through that lens and maybe pull something out or what have you.
Okay.
But it's all fair game. Our warrant. A bunch of half.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
When you get to this point where these people land, could we also include finance committee in a joint meeting?
Yeah.
So that we're not having, basically to make the use of the time rather than have the opponent come to Board Selectment and then come to Finance Committee, parrot the same thing all three times.
I 100% am on board with that and I, well, I should ask, you guys, you okay with that?
I am very okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That's, yeah. Yes. So let's plan on that.
Yeah, we can say no just as easy in front of.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Very good. Are there articles on here that we want to focus on or take it hard a little bit tonight or anything or? You know, we've gone through it, we've had it. So I don't know. You know, I don't want to shortchange anything, but I don't want, I also want to go through them. We don't have questions or changes or.
Is there any changes?
From what I sent out earlier, no. The only, the only, it was a spelling mistake instead of Robinson. It was Robinson. That has been corrected in Article 17, but that's the only change that is.
Glad we caught that mouth.
So, but that's where, you know, like for you, you all are all the pros on format on this. So for me, this is my time, first time through. So I don't know if you you know, go one by one, just asking comments or if there's specific things that each of you.
I mean, typically what we would do is typically in January, we kind of start with our budget presentation. So really in calendar time, right now, we would already have met with the, with. In calendar time, right now, we would already have met with the, with the different departments. We already would have kind of roughed up these articles a little bit. This one, we'd have at least heard the, you know, the ask and reason why. So we're a little bit of a jam, of course, because we don't really have a, an actual budget to work off of, because. School and the governor's budget, House and Senate budget and all that are obviously delayed. Um, so having said all that, I guess the only thing I'll share, and again, I think it probably makes the most sense to just wait.
Yeah.
Um, because the whole process is delayed a few months, but yeah, but we, you know, again, we'd have to thrash the budget. Coming, so.
Yeah.
But the, um, have either of you thought about having a bottom line budget vote? Annual town meeting for each.
I absolutely have. I just was figuring that was gonna be a topic for another meeting, meaning that rather than dividing up. And like, uh, for example, I'll just, I'll just talk about the board of selectmen's budget. There's board of selectmen wages, and there's, um, board of selectmen expenses, then there's manager, and then there's, there's, uh. There's like five budget items and, um, uh, would like to be able to propose basically grouping things together so that we have. Um, everything together. You're still seeing the details, just what the motion is. It's basically just summarizing between wages and then expenses. Still keeping those separated, but grouping it so that finance department, you're dealing with finance, you're just financing expenses rather than. Treasure collectors' expenses, treasure, uh, assessors' expenses and grouping and having them all divided out. Um, one of the reasons is that, um, to simplify sort of the the vote of town meeting, their previous efforts been to sort of. Consolidate, uh, but one of the things from a budgetary management standpoint that I found is that it's. I then have to, and departments have to also do this, basically, um, do their own. Uh, Excel spreadsheets that then divide everything up. So I can't go into Vadar and say, I'm just curious, where are we with electric right now? Because it's not its own, um, budget line, and I can't see like, okay, it's, it's January, we should be essentially fifty percent through the budget. Are we using seventy-five percent of what we budgeted? Is that a problem? So there's some of these things that by doing the, the bottom line. It allows for us to put in place processes to, uh, account for things a little, a little bit better. Uh, so that's one of the things that I was, uh, gonna approach, not only when we got FinCom and also the board of selectmen back together. To talk about that, because really, the finance committee report would stay exactly the same. We just would highlight what the motion of town meeting is. So people will still go through, do their holds on individual items. It's just the vote of town meeting. That would, that would be what, um, would change. Or at least what, what request to be changed.
Um, I mean, at this point, I would say as long as the presentation, the way the line items of the budget are broken down. For instance, he'll call out, you know, numbers one through forty, you know, numbers forty-one through sixty, number, as long as that doesn't change. Um, I don't, and it will make, I I believe once that's all done and held, I think the total, uh, levy is usually voted on. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's typically how we do it, so I'm not sure, till I, till I better understand what we're trying to spice and dice, I think we'll just kick that down the road.
You're, you're saying it's like bottom line. No, I mean, that's where I, sorry. Um, uh, I don't, I think what you were saying, once we, once we know like what people are objecting to. We know where things fall, but town meeting is still sort of voting like each individual line is what they're approving rather than. Say, this is the town of Upton, this is like the final budget.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to do it that way.
Right, yeah, right. We just break it up by departments.
Have visibility into line items within departments. You'll vote on the bottom line for each individual department.
Right.
But any, but we will have visibility and transparency into every line item.
Exactly.
And any individual line item can be held, not just a department.
Exactly, exactly.
Sorry, we haven't did it. David already said. Board of Selectmen, one through ten. Then you hold whatever.
Each, like, let's say board of selectmen was one through ten. One is then voted on, two is then voted on, three.
I don't think that's how we do it.
No, they vote one lump.
It's, it's grouped, but it's not by board of, it, it's not by department. It's sort of like. Uh, because then, um.
We're good, we, we.
Each individual line in our, yeah, graduating to the point where we're doing it in.
The way you're, the way you're describing it is the way we will do it.
Yeah.
As long as everyone agrees.
People can order stuff and add ten dollars.
Exactly.
Yes, right.
Someone can hold an individual line item, we're just voting on the bottom.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. What else?
Uh, as far as articles, I would only say it again, I don't want to dig into it too deep, because we have, uh, other days for that, but I would just say that. From what I am hearing and people that I talk to on a regular basis, it's really not any support that I can come up with for a tractor, for mowing. People just are not seeing any value in expanding, you know, I mean, just outsource it, be done with it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing.
Did we, because I feel like we've. Obviously, there's people that know this, like Dennis, but like. We just, I know we've recently bought an over-the-guardrail hanging mower thing, because we used to outsource that. So we bought one so that we didn't have to outsource it. I think we just approved a new mower as part of getting the cemetery.
Yes, twenty thousand dollars, two ten thousands, I don't exactly remember.
There were some things there. So is this, do we know if this is replaced? Well, I guess we'll wait for him to come. This is about we're trying to. Okay. We told you not to come, Dennis, so that you didn't have to do this, but here you are, so now we're gonna do it.
I couldn't resist. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You, you just can't stay away, can you? Hey, that's what we love about you, Mr. Westergate.
I'll be brief. So we've had this discussion over the course of several years, and each time it comes time to put it on the warrant. Um, there are other things that are more pressing, and we talk about the merit behind it, but this isn't the right year. And the merit behind it is such, we co- we currently use our budget to outsource. A contractor to come in and they, they cut once per year, um, a certain number of roads in town. They don't get every single road in town, because we don't have enough money to do it. They only do it once a year. It's at their schedule, not our schedule. And our staff still has to support them, so I have to align my staff with that tractor. And the pitch that I've made then, that I continue today, is such that the tractor is capable of paying for itself. My, my wish is that we purchase this tractor, and then after the tractor is owned by the town, the very next fiscal budget. We reduce that line item by that exact amount of money we pay the contractor, and in doing so, the tractor will pay for itself in five or six years. That is the merit behind it. In addition, we gain efficiency, um, and effectiveness, because I can now cut the grass. I'm sorry, the side of the, the roads, when we need to cut them, not when the vendor is available, and I can cut them twice a year. And since it's my staff that I have to set up with the contractor, it's much easier if we are the contractor and set the staff up. So you can understand the efficiency and the effectiveness that we gain by that. Um, also, we did not do any roadside mowing this year, because the contractor that we've been utilizing for the past. While I've been here, this is my sixth year here, and we've been using the same gentleman. Uh, an older gentleman who works for himself, and it saves the town a lot of money for the past six years, he could not do it this year. And we could not find another contractor to come in and do it in time to get it done. So none of our roadside mowing got completed this year. And I received a great deal of complaints about visibility, and the crews had to go out and do a lot of intersection cutting. And some dangerous roadside cutting by hand, um, to try to make it through this, the year. We're definitely gonna feel the impact of that come springtime. There's a lot of that grass that should have been knocked down in the fall, did not get knocked down. And in the spring, it's gonna be glaring at us. So my goal is to try to get a contractor in early this year. Because it'll take some time, if we were successful on town meeting, to get the tractor. After we secure the tractor and we get a program going, hopefully by the fall, we could get a cut in, or maybe I won't get it till winter, the way things are going. And then the very next annual budget, we will reduce that line item and save that money each year until, and eventually the tractor pays for itself. That's the merit, and Steve, you and I have actually had conversations about this several years ago, because you were very concerned about the merit of it back then as well. So I just thought I would bring that up and refresh everybody's memory. It's not a new item we've talked about. It's just, this is the first time it's actually making it to town floor, I hope.
Right.
Yes.
Want to add to that, please? Uh, I have had this conversation from the first year, Mr. Wes, Mr. Westgate was on the payroll. Uh, he, he and I have talked about this. This is, again, as he points out, this is not something new.
Okay, thank you.
But things change.
What other questions? Oh, go ahead.
How long will the tractor, Dennis, deeper? How long will the tractor last and how much of the maintenance on annual basis?
So the tractor itself is primarily used just for roadside mowing. It's an all-wheel-drive system. Because we want to be, we want to have the ability to go off-road with it, to do around the dams. And then we have some areas in the water and wastewater department that are wet, that we would need the four-wheel drive. So the tractor itself really is, that's its primary goal, is a couple of times a year for about. Uh, probably take about five or six weeks each time it does that. So spring and fall, it's mainly out cutting the roadside. Around the dams and the areas. The tractor doesn't get a lot, it doesn't get abused. So the tractor should last twenty years, I would hope to get out of that tractor. The roadside mower is called a boom flail, and by its nature and its design, they are, um. Destructive pieces of equipment. The goal is to have proper trained people to operate it, so that you keep everything intact. And the only thing that gets damaged on the, on the arm itself, it's just the wear and tear equipment, which are the blades or the roller knockers, they call them. Uh, if it's a rotary type. And those require maintenance every spring and fall when it's being used, uh, without a doubt. It has to happen. So and they're probably, you're probably looking at somewhere between a thousand and two thousand dollars a year to keep those up. And that's kind of.
The other, the other problem you have is right now you outsource that. You put another piece of labor in that machine. Once you own that piece of equipment, we have to put our own person in that machine. So you know, you're also assuming that additional labor. Not to mention fuel, hydraulic, death fluid, all those other things. So there's, there's a lot more that goes into it. You're talking, as you mentioned, a thousand to two thousand bucks a year, just maintenance. You know, you're gonna have hydraulic lines, you're gonna have obviously fuel costs, all those other things, so those are all things that have to be considered.
What is the, uh, impact to staffing, Dennis, to run this thing?
So we currently have several individuals that are licensed. Um, and obviously, when we purchase a new piece of equipment like this, as part of the, the contract of the purchase. The company sends out their finest to go through not only all of the ins and outs of the machine, but to take the crew out on the road and demonstrate. How to operate it safely. Um, and these are, the, these are pieces of equipment that you need to operate safely. Uh, because they are designed to cut small saplings up to two, three inches in diameter, so. Um, if, if you're not paying attention to what you're doing and you're not careful, um, the biggest problem that people have with these things is bouncing off of stone walls and whatnot. You need to learn how to have, and they have great visibility. It's all in the training and the driver. But we have very competent individuals who operate all the heavy equipment we have today, and this is no more sophisticated or complicated. Than the equipment that we currently run. It's just a different type of equipment. So I don't have any reservations whatsoever about our staff handling it correctly.
And you don't need to add to staff in order to be able to make this mower to full use?
No, absolutely not. We have enough staff.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Other questions?
Uh, nothing right now.
Okay. All right, so we will plan to go through this in more detail. Um, it's gonna be a long meeting, because we're gonna be looking at the capital items and the other items.
So, so then I can, are there specific, um, articles on here that you want to go through? That include things that aren't, and they account for all items or?
Um, no, I think that the only one that I wasn't sure of is the, the paving of the fire and police. You know, I drove through there and they didn't strike me as in particular need of, I mean, they're not perfect, but they're also not like. Six-inch deep.
And maybe I was misunderstanding. You're just talking about that the, the staff sort of, uh, capital. When you say it's gonna be a, a long meeting, or you're referring to the rest of the warrant.
So I think what he's saying, do you want to split up the, say, um, say some of the bylaw changes or something like that? Do you want to split those out?
Right. We can talk now about all of the non-capital articles, because we still haven't done that, and I mean. We sort of have done it, but we haven't, maybe you'd want to revisit it. I'm fine with that, so.
Or we could do it after we address it. If we're talking March seventh, did you say to go over?
Yeah.
Capital request, we can do the meeting after that. Time.
Yeah.
Um, and that would give us a better look at it, and let the other.
Yeah.
You know, in between those two meetings, you should know what the school budget is.
Yeah, so. Does that, does that present any logistical challenges?
No, no, I mean, we're.
At the last minute, we decide to pull something off the warrant, we'll just pull it off the warrant.
Uh, yeah, I'm just looking just to, uh, specifically. Calendar, uh.
Seven, seventh and the.
Yeah.
Seventh and the twenty-first.
Yeah, because I think.
Exact, that's what I mean. I don't want to, I don't want to put it off beyond the date. We, obviously, we don't want to get ourselves to a point where we're talking about articles that we. Don't have the ability to.
Let me just. Just pull that. And so, I mean, realistically, we have, um, uh, the. So equal seventh for a finance committee report to be sent to the printer. Um, month of April is when the warrant is, uh, executed for ATM, so.
Okay.
Yeah, by the seventh and then twenty-first, we're then handling all of those things, identifying what's. What then is left on.
Right.
Then we're fine, then we're fine. So that way, um, it's executed in April.
In April, so we'll let this shake out a little bit in terms of capital budget. We can process and look at some of the other stuff that's in here and sort of. Again, do a pulse check like you have with the mall, right? Like just sort of talk around, see what you can find with these certain things.
Right. Sounds good.
Okay, great.
Please.
So I came on to have a joint meeting to talk about. Finance committee and, and the board of selectmen before the, before the warrant is, you know, when it's executed.
On the warrant. Yes.
Keep in mind, the vast majority of these here are oil plate items.
Yes.
They're there every year.
Yep.
The, uh, um, we mean the re-borrowing funds, the capital CPA.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah.
The question is, is this gonna, are you by equal of one you can choose to do this at a regular meeting?
To do what? To go over the cap?
You all.
To go, well, we're not gonna, that's what we're saying. We're gonna do all the capital budget in one meeting and then all the.
There's other things on here that are not really capital budget items, but they're not of oil plate items either.
That's what we're gonna talk about at the separate meeting. So we're gonna separate it into two conversations. Is that what you're asking?
I guess. That, yeah, that was my.
Yeah, because I don't think we can go through all four hundred and seventy-two articles in one conversation.
Well, to the extent.
Oh, there's not four hundred and seventy-two? How many are there?
The extent that a, uh, we just added three, so now it's thirty-seven. I think that counts to the four hundred and.
That's seventy-two, exactly. Joe's with me, Joe's with me. Yeah, no, it's more than we could talk about in one night to, and give it any justice to. So we'll do the capital ones first with you guys. If you want to come back for the non-capital ones. Or the.
That a, um, bylaw change or something like that has no, has no financial implications.
Yeah.
Probably finance committee doesn't want to listen to that.
Right, yeah.
If we have a few minutes to see, for instance, if we have a few minutes this evening, uh, Joe and I did talk about this, but there's one that probably warrants a little bit of discussion. Joe, you want to speak to this? Article thirty-five, which is increasing the ZBA from three to five members.
Yeah.
Right, so that's something that's initiated by, or less the ZBA and the VOS. Right, so that's something that's initiated by, or less the ZBA and the VOS. So if we want to, we could take a few minutes and talk about that, and then we could, you know, obviously that is going to make it through, or shouldn't say that, but would appear that that holds merit and should make it through to the warrant. So could you talk just for a minute about that article of what is, what necessitates that change? Is the advantage going to five?
It's gonna cost you another $1,000, people members at $500 a piece.
Now, if we scratch the tractor, we'll be ahead again.
No, they're not.
They're appointed. Not allowed. They don't get a fee.
No stipends.
Good. See that?
We just saved a thousand dollars.
We're saving money, let me run.
We're balanced. More balance, just like that.
That was easy.
So, uh, the, the request came in from the ZBA and, and I had conversations with ZBA chair. Uh, ZBA zoning board of appeals with three members under mass general law. All decisions require three members to vote in the affirmative. If you have someone absent, you have someone that does not support the application, there cannot be a dissenting vote. Requires supermajority, which with three-member board, called out by statute, requires all regions to vote in the affirmative. Request came in. You know, there may be applications where one person doesn't support, but the majority do. And that with moving to a five-member, if there was a voice of dissent, supermajority requires four of them. So that one member could not support project and still go through. Most recently, application came into the ZBA. One person voted to not support it. So the, the motion passed two to one, but it failed because of lack of complying with mass general law. But also, it was identified that, that was not known that, that killed the project. So they re-advertised, brought it back in front of the ZBA, and ZBA then approved it three to zero. So ZBA had requested, if we had two more, then at least there's a dissenting. Without any financial implications on stipends, this does require a public hearing with the planning board. This is a zoning. So it's not like within the general bylaw. Uh, does require zoning by law and wouldn't be two-thirds on town meeting floor as well. So that public hearing, I'd have to check. I think it's still coming up in March. But, you know, as we all know, one of the, the say cons is that we have existing vacancies on boards and committees that we can't fill. So does this create a potential that we could still be dealing with open seats on the ZBA? Now they're full members. Currently, we do have openings on the ZBA, but they're the associate members. We have one associate position filled, three regular, two associate members are not filled right now. So that's, that's one of the challenges, is just that.
You're saying the ZBA right now has three full members and one associate? And there's one associate and two associate vacancies?
Correct.
Uh, there's two associates, one filled, one vacancy. Is that right?
There's, the bylaw allows for three associates. So you have three regular members, three associates. There's only one filled associate position. So you've essentially.
I think we've got my head. I'm not disputing.
I'm just saying what the bylaw says for numbers.
I'm just disputing the law, I'm just, just saying that we've never filled it. Both of the associates, right?
But so that, that's fine. I think that the, the, Joe's point is simply that the only downside of having a five-member CBA is that might not fill it, but are there any other cons to having a five-member?
There are many towns that have it. It, it really comes down to, uh, the only difference being supermajority is three out of three for a three-member board, four out of five for a five-member board.
Well, I mean, the, the other. I'm, I don't have a horse in the straits, right? Five or three, it doesn't matter to me. I trust their judgment, but the other fact of the matter is that we're, right, we're making a change because, in response to the fact that they didn't know what the law was. So the solution to that is just making, helping make sure that they know what the law is and, and solve that going forward. Another way to solve it is to go to a five-member board, but I don't know that that's enough of it. There might be other reasons to go to a five-member board. But if it's just because of this one incident of not understanding the supermajority law and having to redo something that they did because they didn't understand how they were supposed to operate, that's, might not be the best justification. But again, I don't, I don't have an interest either way, no matter what from my perspective. But on that, for it, but.
I think I would say this is probably the first year that I've been calling with this many open seats, right? We typically have them filled, especially elected seats. You know, retcon. There's two or three, uh, two or three other boards that have open seats that are, you know.
Typically, and they're typically filled, right? Like, there's, there's an increasing number of vacancies. The trend line is more vacancies and fewer volunteers.
Right.
And so to add more seats, is, are we, are we creating more of a logistical problem by having unfilled seats? Or by having a three, right? What's, what's the lesser two equals here?
We have two unfilled, unfilled associate seats.
Exactly. Okay, other items?
So as, as far as clarification for how we'd be scheduling, my understanding is many of the CPC requests, and, and this is where I'll, I'll check with the, the capital budget committee chair. My understanding is some of those did not go in front of capital budget. Maybe both of you can.
I wouldn't. Capital items.
So ones that are funded through CPC will help have those before the board at the March 20th or so.
I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
That would certainly.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
They don't.
Because realistically, when you look at majority of the, um, now 37 articles, anything that's really tied to a dollar amount outside of water, sewer, enterprise, as opposed to recreation, they're basically capital or they're CPC. There's very few of the citizens petition articles that, you know, they're on the warrant, there's no question they're on the warrant.
Yeah. I mean, the main, main thing is we want to make sure that we're having a discussion about the things that you want to have a discussion about, but that you're not sitting here through two hours of discussion about things that you don't have an interest in, a personal or, or a personal or otherwise. So, you know, if, however it goes down, we'll make sure that we cover everything you guys are interested in, in one meeting, so you don't have to come back for a second shared meeting. Is that fair?
I'm gonna tell you quick. The elephant, no, it's still the spurs.
Right, that, exactly, which I think is kind of why we're trying to. Let's just down the road a little bit to see what we agree, see how, see how much information we can get. That is a big elephant. All right.
So, so for, um, we have the zoning one, there's, there's a very small, like, Article 32, which is to appropriate $380 that, $308 we get from ridechairs, Lyft and Uber. That's, I view that as just, it is almost administrative in nature. What I sort of envisioned.
Then we probably needed to.
Yes. Is having here the articles, we're gonna discuss on the 7th, here's on the 21st, so everyone can basically plan and work.
Exactly.
So like something like 32, I'd say, you know what? No one's speaking to it besides myself, and just like you said, we've already spent more time on it.
Yeah.
Add down the 21st, 22nd. Joe, that's a consent calendar.
The consent. Yeah, and then there's the, the article for donation of land, which actually I confirmed with town council today. We don't, as long as we're not paying for it, it's, we don't need a town meeting article. We can just accept it. We have that provision in the general bylaw that allows for the board to accept donations provided there's no appropriation aside the associate. So we could even pull that, we just.
That the board could execute that, just.
Exactly.
Accept the donation as long as there's no cost.
Exactly. Yeah, and then there's.
We had a bylaw change on that, you may remember.
Oh, you just take the, the recording for the article you're legal, that's right.
Yeah. And then we just have, like, the dog, which that, I'd invite the dog, the animal control officer to come in to speak to that. So, I mean, that's.
Now, but. He already did that. So we're gonna have him.
If the board doesn't feel, that's.
He was excited, but he attended.
Right.
He spoke on it.
Do we need him to come back?
Beyond the board?
I mean, I think.
Ted? What do you think?
Well, it's pretty clear in the way he's changing it, I mean, and he spoke to it that night.
Yeah, I mean, I think we did, we did have a fairly lengthy conversation. I don't think there was anything that was really left out there.
The only thing I disagreed with was the notion of the implication was that it was a more stringent rule, but it looked to me like the rule was allowing for hunting dogs to be off, to be off-leash.
Only when hunting.
Right.
But that doesn't say that now. Now it says your dog can't be off a leash. So we're adding a provision that allows hunting dogs to be off-leash when hunting. See, perfect, thank you, guys. This is what we're talking about. Yeah, they do not care about dogs.
It was the second part.
They care about.
It was the second part where it says if it is controlled, if it is controlled by a leash or at heel besides competent person and obey the commands. That doesn't, that, that is above and beyond the hunting where the, the animal control bell, it's only a hunting dog that is obedient and next and controlled by. So maybe.
Well, that doesn't mean that it's off-leash all the time, when it's obedient and under command and healing.
So is, is what he's trying to do, get to a point where, so, so the law currently allows for a hunting dog to be off-leash?
I don't think it does, right?
That's my point.
Well, it has to be off.
It's not written in there now, so I don't have to, you know, add, adding a provision to identify a type of situation where a dog can be off a leash helps, is a more restrictive dog leash law. Like, the problem in the state forest is dogs not being on leash and dog owners not cleaning up after their dogs. So I don't know how this is making it harder for people to have dogs on or off leashes. Maybe we should have them come back. I guess I talked myself out of it.
I think he's adding the underline, right?
That's my understanding.
Yep.
He's adding that.
But it seems like, like you're adding something in there to.
You're adding.
More dogs off leashes.
I think that's the only dog that can be off-leash is where I kind of read that. The only.
But currently, no dog can be off-leash.
No, they can, if they're at heel, uh, beside incompetent person and obedient to commands of that person.
Right, so now we're gonna add hunting dog? Like, in addition to that, it also has to be a hunting dog?
Uh, that a hunting dog is the only kind of dog that, uh, would be obedient and controlled by a competent person. That's what he's saying.
Off-leash when it's hunting.
And not at the heel, I think that's the, the key he's trying to, what he's trying to separate there is and not at the heel position, right? Because a hunting dog can be, say, in a field pointing.
Yep.
Or can be, you know.
And they're hunting.
Yeah.
But. Hunting dogs, we ever had that dog right there, didn't move until you told them.
Well, once you told.
Once you told.
They go.
She's gone.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to have him kind of clarify. Sense to all.
And maybe I'll just reread it myself, maybe that's all we really need to do. Okay. Uh, anything else?
We didn't do the one on the seniors. The senior work.
Um, that then is coming up as, um, because we don't have that as an article. That's just a discussion, discussion policy discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. We still have to make a motion.
Do you want to? The ring is prodding us.
Sounds like, sounds, I know, he wants me, meaning to move.
He wants to leave the budget, the dust, or the articles, I should say, Dejana.
Let's pass it.
Warrant articles, I should say.
Go ahead.
So did you, are we good with that? Do you want to move on to dive feed?
Uh, yes. Uh.
You want to. Oh.
You talking about the tax work off?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and talk about that?
All right. So, um, in, uh, all new staff is associated with administering this program. And, um, through, uh, talking through the program, there's been a couple of things that came to light. Uh, namely that, you know, we do hire on a temporary basis to fill in for vacancies. People that have retired, seniors in towns to fill in. But we have under the, the, the policy, a provision that says town of upped and employees, not making distinction between part-time or full-time, just town employees can participate. That would prevent someone that just, you know, works, let's just say it was 200 hours a year, helping out assessing. Would prevent them from also doing senior tax work off. I don't know if that was the intent. In other towns I've worked in, we've had part-time senior staff that also have participated in the program. They just can't work within the department that they get paid. Um, so that was one thing that threw in as, as a proposed amendment. The second is that, um, the policy states that, uh, if you are a board member and you happen to be a senior, you can't, uh, participate in the department that you oversee as a board member. Uh, it was brought to, to my attention, um, that, well, sometimes this work is done outside of physical office, um, bringing material to another, um, department or other businesses. Um, that's not, you know, that level of interaction may, uh, with, with, um, staff may be fine. Also, there's not like an escape valve. What happens if you had board members that were seniors that wanted to, uh, provide office support when staff is on vacation and they want to shut the door? Uh, so this was brought as a potential issue that then we just have to shut the office, um, if someone left on vacation. And by having something that the town manager can take action, it sort of is then as an escape valve, allows for, um, a, a unique circumstance that a blanket, say, policy may not apply. Uh, or it may uniquely impact one or one department more than others. Uh, so you have the redline version of those two changes as part of the, uh, the policy. That was adopted in 2018, most recently amended in 2021.
I remember we did make an amendment to this specifically, I thought.
Donate to town, too.
Yeah, that was for Bill, right?
No, me.
Okay. All right, so this.
It still maintains that.
How many people currently are impacted by this?
Uh, right now, one.
One, and who is that person?
Uh, that, Ted, uh, with the board health.
Ted Briggs?
Yes. And specifically, the, the task that he's done has been delivering the trash bags to the businesses. That's been his senior tax work off task.
So we put the seniors through the payroll, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they get it.
Sides, really? Yes, they're, it's their payment.
It should be in bait, because it comes, it comes out of the oval and couldn't tap.
They don't get a check.
Right.
They get a bait at the end of the year.
And the treasurer's office, folks all the abatements and senior work.
Right, and, and they get, they get a W2.
Yeah.
They get a W2. How can they get a W2 if they're not on the payroll?
At the end of the year, they'll get one, but they don't get paid, the money goes.
The, the abatement is the income.
Well, then, did they have to claim the exemptions as income?
That's how, um, when, um, uh, for some people, W2s weren't processed, that's how it came to all of our attention, that they were waiting for, uh, W2 so they can, uh, complete. They were waiting for, uh, W two so they can, uh, complete their taxes. That's been historically provided.
I would just think that, I mean, you, you have your exemptions, you have your senior work off. And it all comes out of the overlay. The exemptions don't get a W two at the end, you're correct? What exemptions? Senior, and not to say, you know, the senior work off, and then you have to clause five all the exemptions that you get.
I, I.
Widows and.
Yeah, I, I wonder. If this, we should take that sort of offline, cuz it seems like we don't necessarily know all the detailed answers to these questions.
I mean, they're.
Right now, I don't, and does it affect?
It doesn't affect the policy.
Okay.
I mean, that's all we.
It doesn't affect the policy, that's my point, so. That was the main thing.
So it only would affect the elected boards, right? Teen. Or part-time employees.
Right, so I mean.
Elected officials are.
The two things would be if, if someone, um, worked under nineteen hours, provided they don't then, um, hit that over twenty threshold through doing. Uh, working for the senior tax work off. Um, there are plenty of people that are retired that support departments that could also, um, you know, assist through senior tax work off program.
Yeah.
So, um, that's just one of the, one of the distinctions that, uh, noticed, um, like, cuz we don't distinguish between poll and, we just say town of upped and.
You don't, don't need to tell us.
Yeah.
And the second, the second one dealing with board committee members, I can understand why would be in place because you don't wanna have a board member that then is interacting with staff in the department and potentially creating a intimidation issue. Um.
Yeah.
So I can totally understand why that would be a policy, um, again, depending on the people involved, but then also that depends on, on the, um, the activity that is being undertaken as well.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, that if there is some sort of relief valve that then they have to provide that documentation in the town manager's office, at least then it's not a by right. Um, thing that then they get assigned to that, that issue, that department. So that was the rationale for, um, for both of the changes.
So it'd be like an elected official can't sit on a particular board that they may have some influence over.
Right.
A, get other department. That would make.
But they basically, you know, like, and I, you know, if, if one of you participated in the program, they said, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna volunteer, uh, senior tax work off within the board of selectmen's office and then. Sort of having work that then is associated with the daily product that, um, Sandy or myself do, that can sort of lead to, you know, potential for, by no means saying at all, but intimidation. Um, you know, sort of a, a potential for hostile workers. Um. Potential, but not necessarily. So I'm aware that, uh, a couple of years ago, that, um, Insbrist had actually requested from the state ethics commission, uh, uh, of ruling, and it said it wasn't a conflict of interest. So if someone did and they wanted to jump through, make sure it wasn't a conflict of interest, which is one of my main, main concerns, then it could happen, but there may be a level of oversight or interaction that don't think it's appropriate. At least there's a mechanism for that.
Yeah.
But that's. You've had many more discussions on, on this over the last couple of years.
Right. I think ultimately, we try to fine tune it.
Right.
Right? And we try to add some things to it, and I suppose if there's an issue and this solves the issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Okay. I moved that the board of selectmen vote to amend the senior and veterans property tax work off abatement as proposed.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. X, W, have the January twenty-fourth and that seventh minutes.
Check them out. I read through them. They look fine to me.
Sweet.
Good with them, huh?
Yeah.
Well, so. You're good, okay. Um, I would make a motion that the board of selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three and February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries by unanimous action. And now we will be moving into executive session with the motion.
Oh, yeah. I'm on a roll, Maureen.
Oh, good.
He's got it, he's ready to take it easy.
I missed, I couldn't find it last.
Ready to go.
Gotta pay my penance. Alright, I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. A two, one B and Mass General Law, Chapter four, Section seven, to conduct strategy in preparation for nego, negotiations with non-union personnel, Director of Public Works. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A and three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation, litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Federal multi-district litigation versus CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva and Allegan, and will not reconvene in open session. Steven Metelli and I?
Second, Maureen Glenell, I.
Brett Simon side, the motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you, folks.